Salem City Council will meet remotely on Thursday, February 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM to hold its regular meeting for the purpose of discussing any and all business by a remote participation in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the city's website at www.salem.com. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the city's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch, listen, or provide comment, if applicable, during the meeting may do so in the following manner. Please click on the link found in the agenda, password 348471. Go to the website link, https://zoom.us/join, enter meeting webinar ID 82027663452, followed by the meeting password above if directed to do so. Or telephone, participants can dial a toll-free number at 877-853-5257, or 888-475-4499. When prompted, enter the meeting webinar ID 82027663452, follow the instructions to join the meeting. For those dialing in, you may press the star 9 to raise your hand to speak if signed up for public testimony or to participate in the public hearing portion of the agenda. Watch the meeting live on SATV on Channel 22, and I believe on SATV's YouTube channel also. Members of the public wishing to speak on the agenda items must follow the how-to sign-up for public testimony outlined on the agenda below. Members of the public wishing to speak during hearings designated as public hearings may do so by following how to participate noted above. A regular meeting of the city council was held remotely via Zoom on Thursday, February 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice of this meeting was posted on February 8th, 2022, at 1:01 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV. Counselors absent is Counselor Dominguez. Counselor President Marcello presided. Counselor Varela moved to dispense with the reading of the record of the previous meeting. Counselor President Marcello requested that everyone please rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Cohen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, to God with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public testimony, there is none tonight, correct, Madam City Clerk? Hearings?
Thank you, Madam President. We have an order tonight for Comcast. Sorry, go ahead.
Yep, I'm just gonna read it first, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. I thought I had to read it.
That's okay. No problem. We have an order for Comcast to install conduits on Line Street.
Are there any members of the public appearing in favor? Please raise your hand. I see Mr. Fluehling.
Good evening. Dave Fluehling, Comcast, 9 Forbes Road, Woven Mask. I would like to speak in favor of the Comcast petition to place a 24 by 36-inch vault over the existing conduit, and from the newly placed vault, we would be installing one 1-inch PVC conduit, 5 feet plus or minus, to provide service to number 2 Lin Street.
Thank you. Are there any more members of the public appearing in favor? Seeing none. Is there anyone appearing in opposition? If so, you can raise your hand. Seeing none. Any members of the council with questions or comments? Seeing none. Counselor Watsonfelt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the public hearing be closed by roll call vote.
Counselor Watsonfelt moves it to close the public hearing by roll call vote. Seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez? Nope, sorry. Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Marcello.
Yes. On the motion to close the public hearing, 10 counselors voting, 10 in the affirmative, 1 absent, the motion carries. Counselor Watsonfelt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the request be granted by roll call vote.
Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
Counselor Marcello?
Yes. On the motion to grant the installation of the conduits on Line Street, 10 counselors voting, 10 in the affirmative, 1 absent, the motion carries. Further hearings?
We have an order for Comcast to enlarge the existing Comcast manhole on Charter Street.
Are there any members of the public appearing in favor? Mr. Fluehling.
Dave Fluehling, Comcast, 9 Forbes Road, Woven Mask, like to speak in favor of the Comcast petition to enlarge the existing Comcast manhole on Charter Street from a 2 by 2 manhole to a 4 by 4 manhole.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to appear in favor? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public appearing in opposition? Seeing none. Any members of the council with questions or comments for Mr. Fluehling? Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Throw you to Mr. Fluehling. I just want to make sure that we adhere to the street opening permit with regards to the city to make sure you file it in timely manner, and make sure you adhere to the specifications that were put in place by either Engineering or the Electrical Department with regards to the structure of the vault.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you also to Mr. Fluehling, I just want to confirm my understanding of the plans that there's no expected impact to the sidewalks abiding. This is all work taking place within the neighborhood.
Correct.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. I move the public hearing be closed by roll call vote.
Counselor McCarthy moves that the hearing be closed by roll call vote. Seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Marcello.
Yes. On the motion to close the public hearing, 10 counselors voting, 10 in the affirmative, 1 absent, the motion carries. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. I further move that the petition be granted by roll call vote with the conditions that were mentioned previously with regards to the street opening permit and the quality of the vault.
Thank you. Counselor McCarthy moves that this be granted by roll call vote with the two conditions that he listed. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
Counselor Marcello.
Yes. On Counselor McCarthy's motion, it is be granted by roll call vote with the two conditions listed regarding street opening permit filings and specifications put in place by Engineering, 10 counselors voting, 10 in the affirmative, 1 absent, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fluehling. Further hearings?
We have an order from National Grid to install conduits on Pevy Street.
Any members of the public appearing in favor? Please raise your hand. Ms. Mahavier?
This is to provide service, sorry, Sabita Mahavir Shihie, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. This is to provide service for the building at 34 Pevy Street.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public appearing in favor? Seeing no hands raised, are there any members of the public appearing in opposition? I see no hands raised. Members of the council with questions or comments? Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Throw you to Sabita, sorry, it's easier to say Sabita than Mirabishy, sorry. With regards to this one, I just want to make sure that we strictly adhere to the street opening permit in the time allotted in the Engineering Department. I think it's a week prior to opening. I know there was some concerns with Engineering with regards to this particular petition relative to, we received a Mass Works grant, and we're going to be doing some elevations with the crosswalks there. So we just want to make sure that this work doesn't affect that and potentially cause a drainage problem. So I just want to make sure that there is definite coordination between National Grid and the Engineering Department, and the best way to make sure that occurs is to make sure that the street opening permit is strictly adhered to in this case.
The digging will be done by the contractor, but I will pass on your request and see that they adhere to your requirements.
I appreciate that only because I did have the conversation with our Public Works Director, and like as I just stated, there are some concerns. I mean, obviously, this is something that needs to get done. We appreciate that, but we just don't want to create a problem down the road by having your elevations not adhere to the proposed new elevations relative to the work that's going to be done with the Mass Grant program, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other further, any other comments or questions from the council? Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Ms. Mahavier. The documentation I got from Engineering asked quite specifically for us to hold this because they're concerned about the location of the conduits, so not just the elevation, but the layout relative to catch basins. Have there been any communication with Engineering that has recited where this conduit was meant to go in the street?
I'm having a hard time hearing you. Are you talking about catch basins in that area?
Yes, I am.
Okay, that's two I will bring before the contractor, and that would be the contractor putting in this building. My understanding is that they were in close contact with your planning department and with your DPW on this. I had sent their plans back a few times because it didn't meet our specs. So all of that should have been discussed. If not, I will take it back to them and make sure that that has been done.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the public hearing be closed by roll call vote.
Counsel McCarthy moves that the public hearing be closed by roll call vote. Seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. And let the record show that Counsel Dominguez has joined us.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Marcello.
Yes. On the motion to close the public hearing, 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion carries. Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. A further move that this petition be granted by roll call vote with the conditions that they strictly adhere to the street opening permit and coordinate with DPS relative to the elevations with regards to the proposed raised sidewalk and drainage.
Thank you. Counsel McCarthy moves that this be granted by roll call vote with the conditions that the street opening permit be strictly adhered to and that they work closely with DPS. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
No.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Marcello.
Yes. On the motion that this be granted by roll call vote, 11 counselors voting, 10 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, the motion carries. Further hearings?
We have an order from National Grid to install conduits on Norman Street.
Any members of the public appearing in favor? Thank Ms. Mahavier.
Sabita Mahavir Shihie, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. This is to provide service to the city's SciFi system.
Thank you. Any other members of the public appearing in favor? Seeing no raised hands, anyone appearing in opposition? I see no raised hands. Any questions or comments from members of the council? Counsel Watsonfelt?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Ms. Mahavier. There are some open questions about the timing on this project and how closely that has already or not already been coordinated with certain city departments. Could you speak to what the plans are on timing of implementation, please?
The timing at this location would be entirely up to the company SciFi, which I believe is contracted by the city of Salem. We are not doing the digging here, they are across the street. They will have to do it to our specs, we'll take it over afterwards, but it's on them to do the work.
Thank you. There are some open, I had a chance to speak to Jay Carroll, and he also in turn spoke to a number of members of the Engineering Department. There seemed to be some open questions with SciFi, so I have some reservations about moving this forward tonight. Are there any other questions? I'm curious before we move on. Anything, any additional information from Ms. Mahavier would be helpful, I think, too.
This was the only way to feed them at this location. This was the location they were going to put in the cabinet and the metering. We need a point of demarcation, it's going to be the city's handhold that is being put in, and this is their decision. They were made aware of the conduits in the street and how busy it is out there. They didn't seem to feel that there was an issue going in that location. I understand Jay had issues with it, and he was supposed to reach out to the contractors doing this work. That's the last I heard.
Madam President, if I may? Thank you. I think that the questions may be predominantly with the SciFi team, and I'm not entirely sure, you know, the petition to open up the street without a lot of clarity around the timing specifically with regards to traffic mitigation and the impending work that the city has going on with the Essex Street roadway project. And I think that there may still be some open questions for SciFi around the work that they did in the pilot program over on Jackson Street, so I would be, I would want to make a motion probably to continue this until we can gather some more information and make sure that the city departments are all completely comfortable with this plan.
Thank you. Counsel Watsonfelt makes a motion to continue this public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
That to date certain 2/24 to the next meeting?
I think that that, yeah, I think that would be sufficient timing. Thank you.
Second.
Second to my Counsel Hapworth. Do we need to do a roll call vote on this? Yes. Okay. On Counsel Watsonfelt's motion to continue this to the February 24th meeting, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Marcello.
Yes. On Counsel Watsonfelt's motion that we continue this hearing until February 24th, 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Mahavier.
Thank you.
Appointments and reappointments?
You have held from the last meeting the mayor's appointment of Catherine Bertrand to Beacon Street to the Salem Public Art Commission with a term to expire on January 11th, 2024.
Counsel Watsonfelt?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for confirmation by roll call vote.
Counsel Watsonfelt moves for confirmation by roll call vote, under discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Ms. Bertrand for her willingness to join the commission and to share her expertise with the commission and to serve the city in this capacity. As you may have seen, Catherine has a long history of arts administration in Salem. I think she'd be a wonderful addition. As a point of personal preference, I want to acknowledge that Ms. Bertrand is my wife, and I have actually served with her in arts administrative capacities in the past, so I am doubly supportive personally and professionally of this appointment, and I thank you for your time.
Any further comments? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Marcello.
Yes. On Counsel Watsonfelt's motion for confirmation by roll call vote, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion carries. Counsel Watsonfelt?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules to allow Ms. Bertrand to speak for a moment.
Ms. Bertrand, it's all yours.
Thank you. I'll just take a moment of your evening. I would like to say thank you to the mayor for the appointment and to the council for the confirmation, and I do look forward to serving with the Public Arts Commission. I'm thrilled to join the members and support the artistic endeavors of Salem's creative community. Thank you again, and have a wonderful evening.
Not sure how to move her, but anyways, okay. Further appointments and reappointments?
Held from the last meeting, the mayor's appointment of Brooke Nagel, 35 Washington Square, to the Beautification Committee with a term to expire on January 27th, 2025.
Counsel Watsonfelt?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for confirmation by roll call vote.
Counsel Watsonfelt moves for confirmation by roll call vote, under discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I want to thank Ms. Nagel for her willingness to serve the city in this capacity. I look forward to seeing all of the work that she and the Beautification Committee continue to do. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Marcello.
Yes. On the motion for confirmation by roll call vote, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion carries. Counsel Watsonfelt?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules to give Ms. Nagel the opportunity to speak.
Seeing no objection. Ms. Nagel?
Thank you all for having me. I'm looking forward to serving on the Beautification Committee and helping build a strong volunteer base to help continue our city's efforts to just keep on being beautiful. Thank you all for having me.
Further appointments and reappointments?
We have a list of Ms.'s reappointment of the following. Kevin Nien to Commission on Disabilities, February 14th, 2025. Anthony O'Donnell to the Cemetery Commission, February 14th, 2025. Josh Gillis to the Bicycling, Josh Gillis, Michael Williamson, Connor Ryan, Michael Daros, and Matt Kruse to the Bicycling Advisory Committee with terms to expire on February 14th, 2025, and February 11th, 2025.
Counsel Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for confirmation by roll call vote.
Counsel Hapworth moves for confirmation by roll call vote, under discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to thank all these folks for continuing to serve.
Any further discussion? Counsel Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo that, thank the good counsel, a large mention, and I think we all have to be very grateful to have such a great group of people volunteering to serve a great city. But I wanted to point it out in particular, one person that is bringing a lot of services that, at this point, he touched me directly, which is Anthony O'Donell and the Cemetery Commission. I think that his expertise and his experience bring a lot, and I want to thank publicly to him and to those who do those type of services, because at this moment where I am in the personal base, I feel the importance of the cemetery and anyone related in that capacity. So thank you so much, and I want to just express myself on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Marcello.
Yes. On the motion for confirmation by roll call vote, the list of members to the Commission on Disability Cemetery Commission Bicycling Advisory Committee, 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion carries. And I just want to thank all of the members of the committee and commissions that are continuing to serve our city. We appreciate it. Communications from the mayor. Oh. Councilor Watson felt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we go out of order tonight, jumping to page 20 and take up the presentation by Ms. Jean Cola.
Seeing no objection. Page 20 and, let's see. Amanda, you have the floor.
Hi there. Thank you so much. I'm going to share a slideshow with Madam City Clerk. Is this something that you could share on the screen? Eileen?
You should be able to, Amanda. I didn't know that, that was happening. So if you have it on your desktop or I can get it up.
So this is, I just wanted to go over a brief presentation on the draft guidelines. These are the guidelines for the new Section 3A of Mass.
Hold on a minute, Amanda.
Is she not a panelist?
I'm trying to promote her to a panelist.
Okay, all right. I didn't realize that. I thought you did. Okay.
I tried to.
All right. Okay. Sorry, Amanda. You're coming in. Okay. Sorry about that. I thought Councilor Musillo had done that.
There we go. All set.
I'm muted. Thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity to speak on this matter, and good evening, city councilors. So this is a brief presentation on the draft compliance guidelines for multifamily districts under Section 3A of Mass General Log, Chapter 48, also known as the Zoning Act. So we're going to be talking about zoning tonight. The draft guidelines before you are for comments. The Department of Housing and Community Development at the state level is looking for comments from MBTA communities on these guidelines. So I'm going to provide you a brief summary of what Section 3A is. I'll touch on a few of the key definitions and talk about why this is important for Salem, what it means for Salem, and how to provide comments. So this just goes through the contents of everything that is in the draft guidelines. They were published a couple of months ago, in December of 2021. That image on the right just shows what the guidelines actually look like. And the link on the bottom of the page will get you directly to the full document. It was also included as part of the agenda package. So again, I'm going to speak to the overview of Section A, the definitions, a few of these items, but I'm not going over everything. That said, if you want to comment on anything in the guidelines, please let me know. I'm happy to take those comments. So the overview of Section 3A, it was enacted as part of the Economic Development Bill. That's the same bill that allowed housing choice. The legislation that reduced the quantum of vote for certain housing zoning amendments. For example, accessory dwelling units, that quantum of vote was reduced under the Housing Choice Bill, and this is under that same legislation. It has a few requirements in here. The bold text are definitions that I'm going to discuss later on, because those are really important in how they define each of these things. And so Section 3A requires MBTA communities to have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. And then it has to meet some other criteria, certain criteria, and that being that the zoning district allows for 15 units per acre. The district has to be a certain size, a certain distance from transit, suitable for families. And that means that you cannot restrict the number of bedrooms. And again, this whole thing that we're talking about is zoning, so it's not what's built on the ground. It's what could be built with a zoning district. So what is an MBTA community? In short, if a community is served by the MBTA services, it's an MBTA community. That also includes communities that do not have transit directly in their community, but if they're in close proximity to. Salem, of course, has the commuter rail as well as bus service, so we are an MBTA community. This map shows all of the MBTA communities impacted by Section 3A. In total, there are 175. All of the specific criteria are informed by the general compliance that MBTA transit is an asset. And so that means what these guidelines are saying is that if you're served by this asset, you need to contribute to housing, to new housing. And that's basically the gist of what that big blurb is on top. The second part speaks to reasonable size. And I'm sorry, this slide has so much information on it. I just want to distill it down. This is copied directly from the guidelines. But reasonable size, the guidelines says that it's relative, because all 175 communities are different. So there's not a one-size-fits-all for any one of those communities. And so it's looking at, you know, zoning for one might be very different for zoning from another. That said, there are very specific criteria that need to be included in the zoning. So why should Salem comply? Why do we need to comply with this new Section 3A? Well, because an MBTA community that does not comply will not be eligible for funding from various funding sources. But that includes Housing Choice Initiative. We recently received a $500,000 grant on Bridge Street for some water type infrastructure due to Housing Choice Initiative, local capital project funds, the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. There's a little image from Salem News capturing the $3.25 million that Salem was recently awarded with the Mass Works. Salem has received millions of dollars in grants from these initiatives. And so we want to be able to continue. It's actually critical to be able to continue to use those sources of funding. Right now, DHCD is in a comment period, and that goes through until March. And this says we have to have this public hearing before May. But their comment period goes through until the end of March. And so how do we demonstrate compliance through that timeframe? Well, it's actually pretty easy for the first half. We need to do three things. First, we have to include a presentation of the draft guidelines in a meeting of the city council. And that's what we're doing tonight. The second piece, again, it's a really simple piece. We have to submit a form at the MBTA site. And that's something that staff will do subsequent to this meeting that demonstrates we had this hearing. And the third piece is that the city provides updated GIS layers to the state. And that's something that our IT staff has already done, as they do every year. So then this is looking at the details of what those definitions mean. As of right basically means that the permitting process in the zoning district cannot be a special permit. It has to be as of right. Site plan review is considered an as-of-right permit. It's not discretionary. There's not findings associated with it. When a planning board goes through a site planner review process, there's, there are adequacy requirements. For example, our planning board is a local board that reviews the site's layout and will determine if the, the parking is adequate or the, the travel lanes are adequate, if the architecture is adequate, but it's not a specific finding. So that is considered an as-of-right permit, and that has been identified in these guidelines. And now I'm going to talk about determinate and reasonable size. Again, in the guidelines, it says it's relative, and at the same time, they have these different tests that have to be done. It's a two-part test. The first thing is that each of these communities need a zoning district that's at least 50 acres or one-tenth of the land area that's within half a mile of their transit station. So some communities like Salem have more than one transit station. And if that's the case, you still only need one district. Those communities have the opportunity to have split in it up. They could do that. But only one district of reasonable size is required. A minimum multifamily unit capacity is also required. Again, this, this is what the zoning could create. It's based on the year-round housing units and a percentage. The percentage for each community varies depending on what the transit type is. Salem has commuter rail and bus, but it's measured based on bus because bus has a higher percentage. It looks like they use the higher, the higher piece. So bus transit communities need to have a minimum unit capacity of 20% of the year-round housing units, and that equates to 4,070 units. Now, I do just want to be clear that the unit capacity is not a mandate to construct that number of units, and it's not a production target. It's just saying that the zoning has to have the capacity, if you followed all the requirements, to create 4,070 units. Minimum gross density, I'm just going to flesh this out a little bit more. Again, the minimum number of units is that 4,070. And the district has to allow by rate a minimum of 15 units per acre. And when I say 15 units per acre, that means that for every acre if you have a lot that is 43,560 square feet, it's a good-sized lot, you would need to allow 15 homes by right on that lot. And to put it into perspective, Salem's built environment in the downtown, if you cobble it all together, is about 20 units per acre. And each community has to satisfy both tests, the minimum unit capacity and the gross density. So this is looking at how does this impact Salem? Where do we stand with the need for zoning ordinance? Well, Salem's B5 or Central Business, Business, the downtown, the Central Business District is within half a mile of transit. That circle around the map is a half a mile buffer. If you look at the map, you can clearly see it's at least a tenth of the land area. It is a reasonable size. It's about 120 acres. The minimum is 50 or the one-tenth. But the two things that we don't know yet are the minimum unit capacity and the minimum gross density, because that's going to be an analysis we need to do. And the methodology to do that analysis has not been determined yet or hasn't been clarified. So what we're going to do as part of that form that we submit to DHCD is request technical assistance to, to calculate these two things, to see if the B5 meets these two requirements. And we do anticipate that the B5 zoning district will fully comply. It allows multifamily housing through site planner view. It allows, but the B5, it's, it allows multifamily and as adaptive reuse in existing buildings with low parking thresholds or the ability to use municipal parking facilities. And so there are a lot of things that are difficult to just punch into a calculator. That's where we need the technical assistance to dig into those details. So determination of compliance, this is the second part. After the draft guidelines are, after the comment period's done and DHCD is going to issue final guidelines, the determination of compliance will be in December of, the last day of this year, December 31st, 2022. In the timeline for DHCD to finalize their guidelines, as I mentioned, their engagement period with DHCD is December 15th from the date they released these guidelines through the end of March. The Baker-Polito administration intends to spend the next few months soliciting input from key stakeholders. On the MassGov website, you can find presentations that they've had about this. And Massachusetts Housing Partnership and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council has also produced a whole bunch of information on this, and they have presentations available that explain it. The process, so that engagement period is designed to educate and inform relative parties. And the public comment will end on March 31st, 2022. And then the final guidelines will be issued after that stakeholder engagement process. And then once those guidelines are developed, we'll be informed, how do we demonstrate compliance? Or if a community doesn't comply, what are the next steps to become in compliance? And then it's, it's phased compliance. So for subway and bus communities, they'd have to demonstrate compliance by 2023. And for commuter rail and MBTA-adjacent communities, it's 2024. So I know that was a lot of information. This is how to provide comments to DHCD. There's that website. You can go to massgov.com, and there's a little search box. If you just type in the search box, MBTA communities, it's going to bring you right to the page. And again, the draft guidelines are there, presentations, as well as this comment box. And anyone can provide comments. So you just submit it right on that form. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, and if you have any comments, I would be happy to share those with DHCD.
Thank you, Amanda. Any, councilors have any questions or comments for Ms. Jean Cola? Councilor Hathworth.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think that just, just generally, this is of everything that happened in housing choice. This is something that I think is hopefully going to be the most beneficial. I think some of us are appreciative to see the ability to pass something like ADUs. But I think with, with, no matter what we do locally here, what happens regionally, I think, is what will impact affordability the most. And I think this is great to get other communities to do their fair share. I think you sort of addressed it. I just wanted to get clarity on that, on one point. Communities like Beverly that have five MBTA stations, they're, they're still required to do exactly what a community like Salem has one. Is that, is that the way I understood that? There's no difference in requirement based on number of stations or MBTA service?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I guess the other, the other question is, just broadly, have you seen, what sort of, I guess, impact has this had on other communities? Have you seen, have you heard about major changes happening out, maybe out with some of the communities out west? Or just, just curious what the, what the movement or impact has been in other areas?
I think it's a, it's a little early to tell. From, for the past couple of months, I've been on a lot of webinars with planners from other communities, still trying to get their, their handle around this. But I'll be interested, I'll be taking notes and jotting down to see what other communities are doing, and I can report back.
Thank you.
Councilor McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Amanda. Just a curious question. I mean, when you show the map and it shows the MBTA station at the epicenter, and it's, it says a half mile. Can you explain, when you look at that perfect circle, obviously, if the circle touches a piece of property, does then that entire property then get encompassed into that? Or is it specifically, is that, is that a hard line that delineates exactly where it occurs? Or, you know, I'm trying to say, but I don't have the map in front of me. I mean, I can't blow the map up that you're presenting. I mean, so I can, I can dig it up later. But when you blow the map up, if it touches, if it touches a larger parcel, is that parcel then included in it? Or is it just the area that's included in the circle?
So the, the circle around the station just shows that the zoning district has to be within that circle. So if it includes other parcels, those parcels don't become part of the zoning district. You just have to have the zoning district within that service area. Because the goal being you have multifamily housing within walk-in distance to transit. Because the goal, the goal being you have multifamily housing within walk and distance to transit.
Uh, no, I understand that, but, uh, uh, so basically, um, I guess it's a question of where you exactly measure from. I mean,
Oh, that's relative.
It's relative from the exact center of the MBTA. I mean, because you're going to get to a situation where someone may, could you pull the map back up just real quick? I think this, we talked about this last year, I think, and it's just a curious question. Is, yeah, okay. Can you blow up the bottom right hand corner of that?
Um, actually, let me show it. Can you see that?
Yep. Can you, uh, can you go over towards more towards like, uh, Peckering Wall? To the right? Okay, thanks. Okay. All right, it was just, I mean, it was just a curious question because, I mean, obviously it doesn't include the whole B five. It seems, it seems like it's grabbing most of it. Um, okay. Because the, 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 the green part right at the middle of the screen is the, basically is the church property, which we, we extended the B five years ago to include that property. Um, so, okay. I was just curious, when you, when you look, when you look at this circle is like, it be, it becomes all of a sudden, it, it doesn't seem like there's any um, parcels in that to consider. So, okay, thank you. I just, it's more of it's like, where is it measured exactly from? And what encompasses in it because, but, okay.
There's, and there's really not an exact measurement requirement or criteria from MBTA because they wanted to provide some flexibility. Um, in the guidelines, it says to maximize flexibility for all MBTA communities, the distance from transit may be measured from the boundary of any parcel of land owned by a public entity and used for purposes related to the transit station, such as an access road or parking lot. So they're trying to create some flexibility. There are MBTA stations that are all, that are surrounded by marshland and you can't build there. And so it's trying to create that flexibility.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Watsonfeld.
Always muted. Thank you, Council President. Through you to Ms. Jean Cola. Um, Amanda, first of all, thank you very much for this presentation. I, I, I find it hugely informative. Um, I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit more about that, uh, minimum number of units, cut the capacity for that minimum number of units in the area. And then specifically, is that minimum number, um, specifically that, that criteria has to be met within that half mile radius? Uh, is that correct? And you had said that, that you guys, that you all think that the, um, that that radius that you just showed already may comply, once you figure out what the measurement could is. Could you speak a little bit more about that specifically? I don't want to put you on the spot, but with regards to the number of units already in our downtown?
Yeah, so that's what I find, I, thank you, that's what I find very interesting. I had a really hard time wrapping my head around it, but we cannot count the units that are already built. Um, so that doesn't come into play at all for it, which is really interesting. It's just looking at, let's say we had a blank slate, um, and we put our zoning down. How many units could be created with that zoning? Now, that's really hard to do, particularly where we are very supportive of adaptive reuse and want, you know, don't want buildings to be demolished. So our zoning allows for adaptive reuse and you can get more units essentially by doing that. So that's a hard calculation to do, but it's identifying, it, it's determining whether our zoning, current zoning district could get to 4,070 units by right if it was a blank canvas. But the expectation is not to get to 4,070 units. It's not a goal or a target, it's just what would yours, what could your zoning, what's the capacity of it? Does that answer the question?
As much as I think the question can be answered without a formula in place, yes. Um, I do have a follow on. So the, that piece, so say for example, that that half mile radius did not bear that capacity. Would we look citywide then, would they expand the radius?
Um, yes, so we would, if it does not meet the requirement, we'd have a couple of different options. It could be looking at another zoning district. We could modify the B five zoning district to tinker with it to get to that unit capacity. Or you could look at creating a new zoning district, as long as it's within half mile of a transit station.
And one last question, if I may. Uh, is there any particular language in the bill that, that encourages or includes or, or excludes, for that matter, any kind of housing, with the exception of the, of the family, um, requirement? Um, specifically, I'm thinking that encourages additional public housing or additional, you know, very low capital A affordable housing or anything like that?
It does not, no.
All right, thank you.
But yeah, these are all, if there's any suggestions or comments, um, these are things that you could provide as comments to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you again for your time.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we, uh, receive this lovely report and presentation, um, and, and it be filed.
Thank you. Counselor Watsonfeld moves that this be received and filed. Um, and I would also like to add, if we could get a copy of that presentation sent to the councilors, I'd appreciate that. Um, all right, on Counselor Watsonfeld's motion, all those in favor? Can I see all the hands? Okay, all those opposed? Let the record show that I saw eleven hands in favor. The motion carries. Counselor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we return to the regular order, page nine.
Thank you. Communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $300,000 is hereby appropriated from Fund Balanced Reserve for Appropriation Free Cash Account to the account listed below to fund supplemental costs associated with FY22 Fire Department overtime.
Counselor McCarthy. You're muted.
Sorry, I apologize. Uh, I move for, uh, thank you, Madam President, I move for suspension of the rules.
Seeing no objection. Counselor McCarthy.
I further move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor McCarthy moves for adoption by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I don't need to tell anybody in this room that there's been a lot going on over the last couple of years with regards to all, everything COVID related and um, our, our fire department was obviously affected by all of that. And in doing so, they incurred a bunch of, um, overtime that, uh, we will need to, um, so, so there's, there'll be a need to supplement their budget with free cash in order to cover some of those incurred costs. And in my discussion with the finance director earlier today, um, it's something that we need to give, get in place to make sure that, uh, um, they, you know, I mean, obviously they've been, overtime is, but they've been getting paid. But it's what's happened is the account has been depleted, so we need to supplement the account so they can continue, so. Um, the, uh, finance director, uh, reviewed this with the, um, fire chief and they believe that this amount will cover them through the end of the fiscal year. So I would move for adoption by roll call vote.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel McCarthy's motion for adoption by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Morella?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counselor Masilla?
Yes. On the motion for the appropriation of $300,000 from Fund Balanced Reserve for Appropriation Free Cash to the accounts listed below, we have 11 councilors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We've been ordered that the sum of $40,000 be appropriated and transferred from Capital Outlay Fund to the short term CIP planning, signage, painting, and other costs associated with the Heritage Trail project.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for a suspension of the rules.
Seeing no objection. Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam President. I further move for, uh, for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor McCarthy moves for adoption by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I had a conversation with the finance director about this as well. And I also had a conversation with, uh, Counselor Hapworth, who has been working on this with, uh, uh, for the last two years, trying to get this, uh, project up and running. I believe this is only the first step in a whole bunch of things that they have planned. But, uh, I will, uh, let Counselor Hapworth speak to that if, uh, you would recognize him, Madam President.
Counselor Hapworth.
Thank you, Madam President, and I thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Uh, yeah, so this is, this is something that goes back, uh, about, about two years. And, uh, I think it, it stems from a recognition among, among many in Salem that A, our, our, our current heritage line, which has served this community well over the years, is, is not in good shape right now. It's, uh, someone who lives on what may or may not be the heritage line. I don't, it's, it's had many offshoots over the years and, and many places, many businesses that have painted it into places where it probably shouldn't be. Um, and it's, I'm not visible in other areas as well. Um, so there's definitely a need to repaint it and that there's a, um, there's also some, you know, there's some connotation around the word red line for sure. And, and any, any of us who've worked in zoning on the city council know, know the, the, the history behind that word and, and what that can mean to some. Um, so there, so we did decide to, uh, to look at painting it a different color, uh, uh, pulling that paint from the, from the city seal, but also looking at just telling a more diverse and inclusive, um, uh, story of his, of Salem's history. And I think there's a lot of people that, that are, you know, willing to work on this and, and, and have worked on this. Actually, a lot of people on, on this panel right now have, have sat in on some of those meetings at some time or another before, during, while they were councilors. Um, and just want to thank Kate Fox and others in the working group who got this thing off the ground and got it moving in, in the right direction. This is like, as Counsel McCarthy said, this is the, the first step. But I think, you know, what we're looking to do here is to get, uh, to get this thing, uh, painted, to get, to get a website up and running for tourists to, to look at and, um, to get a project manager hired who can, who can sort of shepherd this thing, um, in the right direction, because this, this shouldn't belong with Destination Salem forever. There's, you know, there's, they, they, they have their work to do and, and, and this thing is something, is something else entirely. But, um, just appreciate everyone's hard work on this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, yes, I am the council liaison to Destination Salem. I've had the pleasure of being, uh, attending, uh, the working groups' meetings and I've had, uh, discussions with Kate Fox. And it, it is exciting, the changes they want to make. Uh, as Counselor Hapworth had, had said, the vision for the new Heritage Trail incorporates a more inclusive approach to our history, reflecting the stories and, uh, people and places that are sometimes overlooked as part of our Salem history. Uh, and also, uh, you know, I'm, I'm happy to, to vote in favor tonight because they'd like to get, uh, the line painted, uh, by, uh, by April, if possible. They've been working on it a long time and, uh, you know, the new color and just, just the new vision is, is exciting. And, uh, I definitely am excited to see this move forward. Thank you.
Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm in favor of this. I think this is a greater, a greater action. However, I have a couple of questions because, uh, I thought we own the painting machine and we own, I mean, we had employees. And, uh, my, my question is why I want to use our own crew to do the work that needs to be done? I think this is a very, very initially, but if we have the machine, we have the employee. How, how can we, I mean, yes, for clarification, how can we not use what we have in, in, in terms of, of our utilization, so the cost or whatever we do can be better and maybe we can do more? That's a question that I have to you, Madam President, to whoever can answer me that question. Because I, I, I thought we had a, a painting machine, like I said before. And we also had the employee, the crew that we had. Uh, I think they, they're willing to do the work, so you can answer me that, that would be great. But I'm in favor of that, uh, for the record. Thank you.
Counselor Hapworth, do you have any information along those lines?
So I know that the, um, and, and I thank you, Madam President. Uh, uh, I, I don't have a specific answer to that question. I think that the, um, from, from my understanding and in, in speaking with Kate Fox, it's, uh, it is a special kind of paint. So the first, the first process in this is, is to remove the old red line, um, which, which is all over the place right now. Um, and there is a special kind of paint that needs to go down and there's a contractor that's hired that does that. Um, but I'm not sure specifically if, if DPW has that. I don't think they have that color paint on hand and I don't think they have, um, I'm not, I'm not positive.
Thank you. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Madam Pres, Madam President. And, uh, I'm, uh, not sure either for the specifics of the paint, but I, I did want to recognize that the funds, uh, are not just for paint, but, uh, possible consultant and signage, uh, and other costs as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, counsel, seeing none. Uh, on Counsel McCarthy's motion for adoption by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Morella?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counselor Masilla?
Yes. On the motion to appropriate and transfer $40,000 from Capital Outlay Fund 2000 to CIP planning, um, 11 councilors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have a resolution celebrating Black History Month.
Counselor McLean? And if you could speak up loudly, your, your mic is a little off.
Yes, sorry about that, Madam President. I've had some moving equipment going on today. Um, yes, so communications from the mayor, uh, City of Salem, February 10th, 2022. A resolution celebrating Black History Month. Whereas Africans were first brought voluntarily to the shores of the United States as early as the 17th century, suffering enslavement and the injustices of secretaries of lynch mobs, segregation, and the denial of the basic and fundamental rights of American citizenship. And whereas in 2022, the vestiges of those injustices and inequalities remain evident throughout American society. And whereas thousands upon thousands of Black residents have, despite the systemic racism and inequities they faced, worked to oppose such challenges and achieved success in our community, contributing to the economic, educational, political, artistic, athletic, literary, scientific, creative, and technological advancement of Salem. And whereas generations of Black residents lived, worked, and died in obscurity, never achieving the recognition or equal rights they deserve, yet paving the way for future generations to succeed. And whereas in 1926, historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson and Minister Jesse Moreland's organization, today called the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, sponsored the first Negro History Meet. Choose the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of President Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. And over the following decades, cities, schools, and colleges across America joined the movement as it grew to encompass an entire month, eventually prompting President Gerald Ford to first recognize National Black History Month in 1976. And whereas the city of Salem has made intentional strides toward undoing systemic and racist inequities embedded in our society, institutions, and community, but acknowledged there is far, far more work still to be done. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize and celebrate Black History Month, February 2022, as an opportunity for our community to reflect upon the history, culture, and struggles of Black residents. We further encourage all residents and members of the Salem community to use this occasion to commemorate and acknowledge the many contributions of Black residents to our city, to learn from the past, and rededicate themselves with resolve and self-reflection toward ensuring a more equitable and just community for every person, regardless of race. And I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Councillor McLean moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to take a moment to say how great it feels personally to be able to sit on this council and lead this resolution. I think there's a special point of pride for me, being a Black man sitting on the council and being able to commemorate this in this chair. I've been looking into it. I'm not sure. I think I might be Salem's first Black city councillor, and so I think there's something really special about being able to acknowledge the fact that our history is living, our history continues, and we're not just talking about the past when we talk about Black History Month, we're also talking about what we're capable of doing in our future.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councillor Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Councillor McLean for bringing this order forward. I think that Salem has a long history of help in the African-American community, and we feel very proud and celebrate this time. I echo the sentiment. As a Latino, African Latino, I feel very, very fortunate to be in this greater city that opened the door for everyone regardless of the gender, I mean, the race. And again, the diversity that we face here is a plus. So I want to thank you once again, Councillor McLean, for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Council President Morcello. I want to say I'm very proud, Councillor McLean, to serve with you. If you are the first Black person to serve in this role, I'm sorry to hear that. And I think that we all need to recognize that Black history is American history, and it's not how far we've come, but how far we need to go. And so it's really important that we do this, and thank you again, Councillor McLean.
Councillor Varela?
Thank you, Madam President. As a community leader here in Salem, I just wanted to say it's a pleasure to serve on the council. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Councillor McLean's motion for adoption by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
Councillor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councillor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor Prozinski?
Yes.
Councillor Ricardi?
Yes.
Councillor Varela?
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Councillor Morcello?
Yes. On the adoption of the Resolution Celebrating Black History Month, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the matter carries. Mayor's informational page, none. Let's see, motions, orders, and resolutions. Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Council President Morcello. In the year 2022, an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, handicap zones limited time, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows: Section 50B handicap zones limited time shall be amended by adding the following: Shore Ave, one handicap, parking space to be added in front of 24 Shore Ave for a distance of 20 feet. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move that this is adopted first passage by roll call vote.
Councillor Cohen moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote. Under discussion. Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Madam President. Wanted to make sure that people knew that this was positively, received a positive recommendation by Lieutenant David Tucker, and the resident per lease does not have access to off-street parking and already has a placard.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
Councillor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councillor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor Prozinski?
Yes.
Councillor Ricardi?
Yes.
Councillor Varela?
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Councillor Morcello?
Yes. On the motion for adoption for first passage, a handicap parking space, we had 11 councillors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions. Councillor Prozinski?
Thank you, Madam President. In the year 2022, an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, handicap zones limited time, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows: Section 50B handicap zone limited time, be amended by adding the following: Boston Street, one handicap parking space to be added in front of number 7 Boston Street for a distance of 20 feet. This ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move that this be adopted for first passage by roll call vote.
Councillor Prozinski moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote. Under discussion, Councillor Prozinski?
Madam President, this is a handicap parking space that was presented to Traffic Commander, Lieutenant David Tucker. He did investigate it and found that it is of legitimate need and is therefore bringing it forward to our city council. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
Councillor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councillor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor Prozinski?
Yes.
Councillor Ricardi?
Yes.
Councillor Varela?
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Councillor Morcello?
Yes. On Councillor Prozinski's motion for adoption for first passage by roll call vote for a handicap parking space, we had 11 councillors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. In the year 2022, an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, handicap zones limited time, be it ordained by the City Council, City Salem as follows: Section 1, Section 50B handicap zones limited time shall be amended by adding the following: Congress Street, one handicap parking space to be added in front of number 102 Congress Street. The space will begin 32 feet from the intersection with Palmer Street and run for a distance of 20 feet. Section 2, the ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move for adoption for first passage by roll call vote.
Councillor McCarthy moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote. Under discussion, Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. I had a conversation with Lieutenant Tucker. He went out and surveyed the situation out there with regards to the application, and he came up with the distances from Palmer Street and to make sure that it fit. And additionally, we will be taking up the next one, which is a repeal of one, because I asked him to investigate the amount of handicap spots relative to the area, and he found one that was an older one that had never been taken off the books and was no longer in need of that residence, so there'll be one, the next one will be one to remove. But for right now, we're just moving for the adoption for first passage of this one.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
Councillor Dominguez? Is he accusing himself? Councillor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor Prozinski?
Yes.
Councillor Ricardi?
Yes.
Councillor Varela?
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Councillor Morcello?
Yes. On Councillor McCarthy's motion for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, a handicap parking space, we had 10 councillors voting, 10 in the affirmative, one did not vote, and the motion carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. In the year 2022, an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, handicap zone limited time, be it ordained in the City Council of the City of Salem as follows: Section 1, Section 50B handicap zones limited time shall be amended as follows: repeal Levitt Street, one handicap space, Northerly Side beginning at the intersection of Prince Street for a distance of 74 feet in westerly direction and proceeding 20 feet in a westerly direction on Levitt Street. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move for adoption for first passage by roll call vote.
Councillor McCarthy moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote. Under discussion, Councillor McCarthy?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
Councillor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor Prozinski?
Yes.
Councillor Ricardi?
Yes.
Councillor Varela?
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Councillor Morcello?
Yes. On Councillor McCarthy's motion for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, the removal of a handicap parking space, we had 10 councillors voting, 10 in the affirmative, one councillor absent, the motion carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Order that the Committee on Administration of Finance, co-posted the committee of the whole, meet to review the compensation of the mayor, Section 2-142, and that the recommendation be reported to the city council no later than the first meeting in April. The committee shall recommend the salary of the mayor for the subsequent two fiscal years, and that the Human Resources Director will survey surrounding cities and towns, as well as cities and towns of similar size, and I move for adoption.
Councillor McCarthy moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. This is something that the city council does every two years. We review the compensation of the mayor. We do it this way, because even though we review it, we make a recommendation, and it actually will not take in effect until after we serve. So basically, for those who don't know, our compensation is tied to the mayor's compensation, so our salaries are set at 1/10 of what the mayor receives. And so in order to avoid us voting ourselves a raise, the idea behind this section of the ordinance is that we review, we set the mayor's salary, and then it doesn't take in effect until after the next round of elections. So technically, we're not voting ourselves in the election, because you can't have the presumption that A, that we'll be re-elected, or that B, all of us will seek reelection. So that's the way it was set up, and this is part of the ordinance, and this is something that, by ordinance, we are required to do. So I'll make sure that the committee has a meeting about this, and I'll loop back with Lisa Camarino, the Human Resources Director, to make sure she has that survey for us before we proceed with this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record show that Councillor Dominguez has rejoined us. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Councillor McCarthy's motion for adoption, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw 11 hands in favor. The motion carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions. Councillor McCarthy, could you take this, please?
Do you want me to take the chair? Do you want me to read it?
I'm sorry. Please take the chair.
Okay, because I could do either one. Thank you. The chair recognizes Councillor Morcello.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the year 2022, an ordinance to amend a zoning ordinance regarding special regulations, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows: Section 1, Section 6.8 Visibility at Intersections of Chapter 6, special regulations is hereby amended by replacing the word "25" with "35" as follows: "In order to provide unobstructed visibility at intersections, no sign, fence, wall, hedge, or other structure or planting of more than three feet above the established street grade shall be erected, placed, or maintained within the triangular area formed by the intersection of streetlines and a straight line joining said streetlines at points which are 35 feet distant from the point of intersection measured along said streetlines." Section 2, the ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move that this be referred to the Planning Board to hold a joint public hearing.
Thank you. On Councillor Morcello's motion that this be referred to the Planning Board to hold the joint public hearing, under discussion, Councillor Morcello?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been holding on to this until we had things going to public hearing, because it is just a minor change in the zoning, and this is related to an issue that I had over the summer and fall with, in particular, an election sign on a fence that did obstruct the view of oncoming traffic, and it did pose a traffic safety hazard. But the city wanted to go by the book, which was 25 feet, and the sign was exactly 25 feet, but still did cause some visibility issues on that corner. So at the time, we talked about changing the zoning ordinance, and so this is what came out of it. I did run this by Mr. St Pierre, and he is in favor of it. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Councillor Morcello's motion that this be referred to the Planning Board for a public, joint public hearing, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record reflect, I saw 10 hands, plus my own.
All right. Thank you. Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Councillor Ricardi?
Thank you, Madam President. Ordered the Tag Day application for February 12, 2022, for North Shore Breaker Softball, be granted, and move for adoption.
Councillor Ricardi moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a Tag Day application. Normally, these would go to OLA, but due to the timing of this one, and there was a mix-up with the application, we are requesting a majority vote from the council this evening.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Councillor Ricardi's motion for adoption, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw 11 hands, including my own. The motion carries. Committee reports. Councillor Ricardi?
Thank you, Madam President. City of Salem and City Council, February 10, 2022, Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter of granting certain licenses, has considered said matter and would recommend licenses be granted. I'm sorry, would recommend the following licenses be granted: Palm Broker Salem Loan and Jewelry, Secondhand Valuable Glass and etc., and Tag Day for Salem High School Concert Band and Wind Ensemble, May 14, 2022.
Thank you. On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw 11 hands in favor. On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion, Councillor Ricardi?
Thank you, Madam President. We wish the sellers happy selling and the Tag Day participants many fruits during their Tag Days.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On adoption of the recommendation, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw 11 hands in favor. The motion carries. Councillor Ricardi?
Thank you, Madam President. City of Salem and City Council, February 10, 2022, Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted it with the Committee of the Whole to whom was referred the matter of municipal buildings and operations. Green ordinance has considered said matter and would recommend adoption as amended for first passage.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw 11 hands in favor. On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion, Councillor Ricardi?
Thank you, Madam President. So the OLA committee met again this week the second time to discuss the municipal, the ordinance relative to municipal buildings, operations, and transportation, otherwise known as the Municipal Green Building Ordinance. This is the second time that we met, reported at the last meeting of the first meeting, where Jenna I provided a great overview and recap of the planning for the municipal- Jenna I provided a great overview and recap of the planning for the municipal, or for the green ordinances that are in the docket. This one is specifically related to municipal buildings. In our second meeting, we went over the items that were follow-up from the previous meeting, and we ended up submitting for, recommending to council approving as amended. I will touch quickly on the major amendments that were made during the meeting. The first one was, in the new construction renovation and addition section of the ordinance, was adding additional language for structures or properties that are under five thousand square feet. So Jenna and Beth added in language that was approved by the committee, for structures under five thousand square feet must also incorporate sustainable building practices and also maximize utility incentives. We also added in a nat section, projects should consider using repurposing of materials, which was a great suggestion from the good board to councillor, to utilize the reuse of materials as well. In the design team section, we added in language to include other comparable accreditation. So we were not just boxed into a lead accredited professional. As it was discussed with Jenna at the beginning of our first meeting, there are many various accreditations in this world of sustainability and resiliency, so we didn't want to box ourselves in to just one type of accreditation that's required. In the green infrastructure and permeable materials section, at the suggestion of the good at-large councillor Hapworth, we added in language around for any size projects to require the use of impervious surface. This is surface materials that you will see when you visit Bertram Field or the new area at Forest River Park. It's really cool. It looks like pavement, but the water just soaks right in, so it's great to have that highly suggested to be used and to use when appropriate. We also added in, in the waste reduction section, that projects or site work will require to use the refurnishing, restore, repurpose, and recycle materials language again, because it also fit into the waste reduction section as well. And then finally, the big section that had a lot of conversation and topic during our first committee meeting was the approvals and waivers section. So this is if, for some reason, the ordinance can't be followed and a waiver is needed. Ultimately, where we landed, of all projects, no matter what the value of the project or what the cost of the project would be, the final approval will come from the purchasing agent as it's decided that it's a city project, and they should be the ultimate decider of the spending of the money. But for projects over one million, it will still go to the Sustainability, Energy, and Resiliency Committee who will provide input. We're also asking for a report to be sent annually from the Purchasing Department to CERC to summarize the waivers that were requested, which I think will provide good feedback of how the ordinance is working. So all of that said, I am very excited to present this ordinance as amended this evening. The ordinance is, it's a great way to really show how we are as a city and where our priorities lie. It is written to promote public health, safety, and welfare by requiring sustainable design, construction, purchasing, and practices for municipal buildings, operations, and transportation. So it's more than just the municipal building. The City of Salem is committed to fulfilling the one hundred percent net zero energy goal, and by doing, showing as we do and as we act, it is a great beginning to the future ordinances that we will be presenting as well and discussing here in council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. I just really want to thank the good six councillors for the work that went into this, in conjunction with many other people, of course, and in conjunction with our representatives from the city. But I went to that first committee meeting relative to this. There was a lot of input. There was a lot of, you know, making the sausage, so to speak, and I think that list of amendments that you just heard and the results really speaks to how well the meeting was run. A lot of the feedback was incorporated, and we came up with something that was stronger than what came in. So I just wanted to offer my gratitude for that.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor McLean said just what I was going to say. I wanted to say thank you to everyone, Counselor Ricardi, and in this city departments that worked so hard on this, the other councillors. I was at that first meeting as well. It was an incredible amount of work that went into this, and it is exciting for Salem. It does, you know, speak to our goals and what we strive for here, and I want to thank everyone who worked so hard on this.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to particularly thank Counselor Ricardi, who was the liaison to CERC for two years during this process. This started over two years ago. I'd like to thank someone who's not on the meeting, Nathan Young, Professor Steve Young of Salem State's son, who spent over five months working with me and other people from CERC, writing the original ordinance that was submitted to the city. We wanted to write an ordinance that was so strong that whatever happened in front of council, it would end up being something great. And just to give the city staff a lot of credit, this ordinance as written is even stronger. It has options so that the city is not tied to lead or passive house. It's got a solar green roof, and it really will be a template for the non-municipal building ordinance that we will be reviewing at some point this session. And I just want to thank everyone on the council because this will make us truly a leader in sustainability and resiliency, starting with our municipal buildings.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counselor Ricardi's motion for adoption of the recommendation of approval of the municipal buildings and operations green ordinance as amended, and I know that you sent out those amendments through email, and I just want to make sure that Madam City Clerk has that list of, okay, good. So, on the adoption of the recommendation, all those in favor? Oh, roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel? Counselor Prozinski?
Yes.
Going back. Counselor Merkel, did you say yes? I didn't hear you. Okay. Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Musillo?
Yes. On adoption of the municipal buildings and operations green ordinance as amended, we have eleven councillors voting, eleven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion carries.
Just to be clear, it's first passage, second?
First passage.
Happen next meeting.
Thank you. That was first passage. Further committee reports, Counselor Ricardi.
Thank you, Madam President. City of Salem and City Council, February tenth, 2022, Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Hall, to whom was referred the matter of auxiliary aids and services for public meetings, has considered said matter and would recommend adoption for first passage.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw eleven hands in favor. On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion, Counselor Ricardi.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, it's too many windows open. This ordinance was originally submitted to City Council in February 2020 to provide auxiliary aids and services for effective communication or reasonable modifications for accessibility in public meetings. We may all have noticed on our council meeting, for example, at the very beginning, there is a statement that states persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for effective communication, such as sign language interpreter, or assist listening device, or print material in digital format, or reasonable modification in program, services, policies, or activities, may contact the City of Salem ADA Coordinator as soon as possible, no less than two business days before the meeting program or event. This was reviewed, language was reviewed by the OLA Committee, and we also were joined by the City of Salem ADA Coordinator, who's also HR, Lisa Camerata, and we discussed the importance of this, the genesis of this. This was a recommendation in the ADA Transition Plan that was completed in late 2019. So we, as many boards and commissions and our meetings, for example, currently follow this, we felt it's important to codify this within the ordinance to show our commitment to the ADA services.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. This is adoption for first passage by roll call vote, correct? Yes. On Counselor Ricardi's recommendation for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Musillo?
Yes. On Counselor Ricardi's motion for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, we have eleven councillors voting, eleven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The matter carries. Further committee reports, Counselor Prozinski.
Thank you, Madam President. February ninth, 2022, the Committee on Public Health, Safety, and Environment, co-posted with the Committee of the Hall, to whom was referred the matter of ordinance relative to an ordinance establishing regulations for sustainable food, wear, and packaging, has considered the said matter and has recommended that the matter remain in committee for further input testimony and public comment.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw eleven hands in favor. On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the beginning of a process that will take, I'm sure, several committee meetings to fine-tune, fine-tune it so that we can adapt it to the needs of Salem. If Salem does adopt a resolution like this, it will become the forty-ninth community in Massachusetts to do so. In other words, it's looking to be in styrofoam and certain other plastics, and then non-bio degradable. And we met and had public, we met with Beth Renard at our meeting, went over the ordinance, had public input, and are looking for more public input and testimony from other experts in the field before we move forward with this. So at this point, it's the beginning of a process that will take a while, and we're just looking at it remaining in committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counselor Prozinski's motion that this remain in committee, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw eleven hands in favor. The motion carries. Further committee reports, Counselor Hapworth.
Thank you, Madam President. City of Salem, in City Council, February tenth, 2022, Committee on Government Services, co-posted with the Committee of the Hall, to whom was referred the matter of to meet with the HR Director to discuss comparative salaries, City Clerk, has considered said matter and would recommend that a three percent COA increase plus five percent increase based on the clerk's ability to execute in complicated processes and her ability to execute remotely during COVID, and in gratitude based on her years of service to the city, as well as recommending goals, the City Clerk in FY23 include continue to make sure use of current technology in order to streamline processes and procedures in the City Clerk's office, continue to work within her duties to ensure accurate, fair, and accessible elections within state guidelines, continue to carry out all duties of the City Clerk as prescribed by city ordinance. This is inclusive of annual and ongoing goals outlined and set by the City Clerk.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw eleven hands in favor, including my own. On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion, Counselor Hapworth.
Thank you, Madam President. And so the intention of the way this was written up here was not necessarily just to put praise for the City Clerk inside the committee report, but to memorialize reasons for why we're doing what we're doing here. I think we are sort of in uncharted territories with, or at least recent uncharted territories, with the City Clerk with setting the City Clerk's salary, as the city ordinances do require the clerk's salary be set by the City Council. So our goal on that night last week was just to look at comparative salaries, and Lisa Camerata joined us and showed us comparative salaries for the, for city clerks in the area, looking at, you know, what the duties of the City Clerk were. They do vary. It's not apples to apples between the cities. Some handle elections, some don't. Some are larger cities, some are smaller cities. There's a lot of variations out there. And then to come up with a number that we felt like was fair, based on, you know, changes in the market, changes in cost of living, you know, changes to the City Clerk's responsibilities. And so we looked at it, and we decided that just based on performance previously, and again, we wanted to memorialize the reasons for why we made the decision that we made. We looked at her performance in the elections. There were some complicated things that certainly happened because of COVID and just because of a lot of different things that were happening in the elections. And we had excellent performance in the elections, just responsiveness to COVID and the changes that have put us into these remote meetings and sort of things that we couldn't have imagined the last time we gave a pay increase. And then just her years of service and things that she's accomplished on this job, both as the City Clerk and as the Assistant City Clerk prior to that. So we looked at memorializing that as an eight percent discount, or eight percent pay increase, and looking at that as saying, okay, well, you know, typically you'd see between a three and five percent increase for somebody, and we felt like she was closer to that five, and then looking at a cost of living that people, we would generally consider to be about three percent or so, and bringing that to an eight percent pay increase. And then we looked at the second sort of portion of that as trying to, as we're sort of trying to wade through these waters and figure out how we should be setting this salary, to set out goals for the next year, and not anything that would be super specific, but also just some very broad goals to look forward. So we looked at making use of current technology to just streamline processes in the clerk's office. There's certainly, a lot of duties have been added over the last few years, and just making sure that we're making use of all available technology as we move to a hybrid, a hybrid model, looking at just running fair, continuing to run fair, accessible, and open elections. We've got a 2022 election coming up. Just want to make sure that that's a goal for her moving forward. And then just execution of the duties as prescribed by ordinance of the City Clerk. So all of that having been said, that's the reason we memorialized it. We looked at recommending an eight percent discount, or eight percent pay increase coming out. I spent far too long in retail, apparently. Eight percent pay increase coming out of the committee.
Any further discussion? Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I had to agree on also the comment that the good councillor, the chairman of the committee, yes, expressed. When it comes to salary, for me, it is very important because I like to see people get paid for what they put in, and I know that the City Clerk and her department has been eventually putting in a lot, especially now in COVID, like it was expressed before. And I had to apologize that I wasn't able to be on some of the meetings, and I was thinking to attend, but for personal reason, I wasn't able to be in it. But I wanted to see this is possible, you know, that we can look at it in a very, I think, logical way. Today in the news, we have a twelve percent increase on what we call the capacity of people to spend. It is an increase nationwide. Those increase on the cost of living never happened for forty years. Right now, we come with a really, really, really measure. I think that we have to adapt to what it is by now. So. to adapt to what it is right now, so my, my position right now is that if we really value what our city clerk is and her department has been doing throughout the whole year, I want to recommend a friendly amendment to this, and maybe, uh, increase it to the three percent to be five percent, and that I think that will comply more with the, with the cost of living that we are right now. Twelve percent overall, the cost of living in, 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 in the whole economy, we will actually say that we need to, not only for the city of Salem, but for everywhere salary, we need to try to comply with what, what it is. So I wanted to bring that friendly amendment, I don't know who support that, but I just wanted to bring it in, I think, uh, we value what she does, and, and I know that everyone here in this meeting agree that the city clerk is putting a lot into what we think it is the most, uh, the most, uh, difficult moment in history, and Salem is not a cent to that, so my friendly amendment, once again, I repeat is that we increase it to three percent, instead of be three percent to be five percent. Thank you.
Counselor Hapworth, will you accept that friendly amendment?
Um, yeah, I, I guess I'd like to see further discussion on, on this.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Watsonfeld?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I, a few comments here, I think. So for starters, I want to reiterate what Counselor Hapworth said earlier, which is, is a crux of the issue here for me, which is that this is uncharted territory, right? There is no, uh, current active precedent for the way the city council sets the compensation for the city clerk, because the council has not been setting the compensation for the city clerk. So I, I think that no matter where we end up tonight, or, or this year, I think that I would recommend that the, that the subcommittee take a really close look at the process, and maybe seek comp, um, expertise in the future to how COLA is set, how those rates are established, what they are, you know, annually, every year, um, and then, and then take that into consideration, and kind of come up with a clear practice for how we want to handle compensation for our, our only employee, you know, from where I sit, the city clerk, um, under the, under the council is, is sort of our, our chief operating officer, um, and so compensation should reflect that, um, in addition to, as, as Counselor Hapworth acknowledged, you know, all of, all of, um, Madam City Clerk's, uh, institutional knowledge that she carries. I did take some initial, um, uh, glances at the fiscal twenty-two budget, and what the department heads were making, and I think that this conversation around eight percent, or i- if we were to move forward with Counselor Dominguez's, um, ten, you know, what would be a total ten percent, is, is still within, um, of, uh, uh, the appropriate range of where some of our top, our top directors are being paid for the city. Um, I do, um, I do think that, you know, another option could be to address the COLA, uh, in, under discussion, figure out what folks think is appropriate there, whether it's Counselor Dominguez's five, whether it's three right now, and we commit to a different process in the future, or, um, or if it is, you know, if we were to say, you know, we could, whatever, whatever the rest of the non-union employees are getting this year, um, plus the five, uh, you know, whatever the, whatever we decide to do moving forward. I do think that, I think that Counselor Hapworth's point about memorializing this, right, is, is how we are going to set a precedent moving forward, and I, I think it really matters. So just wanted to add to the conversation there.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor McLean?
Madam President, um, I, I, I think Counselor Dominguez has a good point, I think probably everybody saw the news today about the seven and a half percent jump, uh, in cost of living year over year, um, I think my perspective on that is that we need to be careful, because we have to make sure that we are being responsible to all of the people that have placed their trust in us, and of course, that includes all of the good work that a clerk does for us, but there are also employees of the city across the board who are facing the same conditions, and who will need to have an opportunity within the context of a broader budget to, to have themselves cared for, and of course, we always have a duty to the taxpayers, right? When we are making choices and recommendations about what to spend and to appropriate, then it is all the residents of the city who then must pay the bill, essentially, and they also are facing, um, that same cost of living increase. So I think we do want to be careful, and, you know, this was a really difficult, I think, conversation in some ways, because I think there's a lot of tension between what we want to do to, to value all of the hard work that the clerk's office does, and contending with the realities of needing to handle the money part of it, but that is our responsibility, and I think, I think Counselor Watsonfeld makes a very good point that we need to make sure we're looking at the long term a little bit, this is not a decision that's happening in a vacuum, it's also about how do you then own this decision going forward, how do you create a process that allows us to continue to give appropriate increases, and how do we make sure that we are sort of continuing to support our clerk's office, not just one time, but going forward, how do we really, um, how do we really close that gap of confusion about who is creating, uh, who is creating the wage and, and what should it be? So, you know, I, I think Counselor Dominguez's amendment is, is, is very well, very well motivated, but, um, I think we should be careful.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Watsonfeld?
Thank you, Madam President. I would agree with, um, Counselor McLean that, that, um, anything done this year sort of builds on itself, right? For, for good, or for good, or for bad, or for ugly, we have to kind of, that's why I keep coming back to the, to the process, and no matter how we move forward tonight, I, I am not fully comfortable with the process this year, um, it's an imperfect situation, and I would endeavor that we all work really hard for future years to figure out exactly what the right practice is. Um, that having been said, you know, I, I agree that, um, I agree that, that we have to put something forward that also works within the realm of a, of a conscientious budget, right? And so I would definitely like to hear from more of the counselors, um, with regards to the three percent, which is a total of eight now, or the friendly amendment that Counselor Dominguez is, is, um, has put forward, or something in between. I'm just curious, I, I really would love to hear from more people.
Counselor Ricardi?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would, I want to add a, a few comments here, um, around the, the process, so first commandment to Counselor Hapworth for taking this up, um, this is the first time it's been taken up in a while, so difficult conversations all around. Um, there are multiple items kind of in flight here, though, so I think the process conversation is still ongoing, and is not, definitely not over. Um, I think it's in multiple committees, actually, because there are different pieces of the process here that need to be reviewed and confirmed, there's the Personnel Board, which I believe is in, um, Government Services, there's the Ordinance, um, Items, which are in Ola, and I believe there's even one in A and S as well. So it, it, the conversation is still definitely ongoing in regards to the process, because that's where, that's totally where I'm hung up as well, like, this doesn't seem like a good process right now, but I understand the need to move forward and do some, something, um, so I, I'm appreciative of, of us doing something, um, but we need to better the process to do that something, which I think we all are in agreement that that will happen, um, and, and we can work on that. Um, regarding the number, you know, it's really, uh, there are so many aspects that need to be considered, that it's hard to do that in a silo, in a vacuum, which is really where we are right now, and what pieces of data do we have while we're in this predicament? We have the, um, the salary comparisons that were reviewed during the meeting, and, and that was a really good data point. We have, um, what the HR Director said would be COLA increases for the year, um, citywide, or what she thought, though those are not set yet, so that could also change. Um, so, working off of what we have for available data, I feel, I, I agree with the recommendation that came out of the committee, I wouldn't, um, I wouldn't change it myself, but I was not a member of the committee, but I, I do, um, agree with where it landed, um, and again, the process to make sure that this does occur every year is going to, I think, really be, um, the difference here. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I do, I do understand the, the conversation that we had, the discussions, which are, I don't think that make any difference on, on continuing, move forward, on recognizing that it is an amendment on the floor, if you, if we all agree on that, let's, let's bring it to the floor, and let everybody decide on, on, on the, if they agree or not with their friendly amendment, I hopefully, it will, it will, Counselor Hapworth said that a friendly amendment, I don't know what is the process, but my, my point is, even though we are discussing the process for the future, even though we, uh, are not feel too comfortable with any increase or not, at this point, we have something on the floor that we need to board, and I think, I feel firmly, you know, strongly myself individually, that we need to look at it and make sure that we really recompense for the effort that we see in our city clerk and her department, especially now in this time, so let's recognize that or not recognize it. I mean, I know that work is being done on that, and work needs to be done, but we need to move forward, let's, let's board it.
Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so I'm, I'm bringing this out of committee, um, with a recommendation right now. I, I, Ty Hapworth is not, I'm not going to make the clerk's recommendation myself. Um, so I see right now, I see three, three counselors that are, that are not comfortable with a friendly amendment, I am comfortable with whatever the body decides, I think the clerk deserves everything we can possibly give her, um, but I don't want to be the one, and I, I don't think it's fair to ask me to be the one who's, who's accepting or denying this recommendation unless my colleagues speak on this, on this topic.
Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, first of all, if, yeah, anyone can make a friendly amendment, and, and any amendment needs to be seconded, so until it's seconded, it doesn't, um, it's not up to, as the, as the, uh, Chair of the Committee, it's not totally up to him whether or not to accept the friendly amendment, because that will be, that will be a substantive change to something that came out of committee, so that will require a second, and then will require a vote of the entire council. That being said, um, it's a difficult situation, I mean, I've worked with Eileen a long time, I understand what she and her staff does, and we had a very difficult conversation with regards to what the numbers were, and, um, she, uh, but, let's, the, we as a, the committee is, I was not, I'm, I'm not a member of the committee, so I did not have, um, I did not make the motion, nor did I make, it was a, didn't vote on it, but it came out of committee, I, I gave my input during the meeting, I believe that when you look at this, it's an eight percent increase in pay, um, based on what we, what the committee felt, and what the discussion was around was, based on her increased, uh, workload with regards to elections, and every, all those things that the state has put on us, but also, uh, in additions that, uh, with the three percent comes around the assumption that last year with, that's the number that was basically the average of all the rest of the departments. Um, that's, we just felt like we needed to come into solid ground as to why we came up with a number of eight percent, and that's where, that's where we landed, and if you go back to the ordinance, it says the city, it says the city council shall set the rate of the, um, city clerk, I mean, since then, I've had some more thoughts in my own head, but now's not the time to bring it up as to how we could improve this process, because as we can see, it is, um, it's flawed, because we, as, as everyone stated, we don't, we don't, we're working in a vacuum, because we have no idea what, when you go to build a budget, and when you go to build, um, everything that goes around in the budget, you know, we, we are not members of every departmental meeting that comes in, they meet with the mayor, and the mayor then cranks, with the Finance Department, cranks the numbers, and then comes to the determination of what that increase should be for non-union employees. Um, I've seen, I've seen, you know, over the years, I've seen, you know, raises that, you know, in, in good times and in bad, with regards to finances, I've seen the, you know, the union obligations get there, sometimes it's, you know, they, they'll sign a contract that's one and a half, one and a half, two, or whatever it is, and I've also seen the department heads that we're talking about not receive any compensation for years at a whack, because the monies weren't available to the way that the budget was, uh, set up, and since that time, we've, you know, worked diligently and hard to, um, compensate the department, the, the non-union department heads, and move them into, that's why we do a salary survey, to get them into, into the range that we feel that they should be compensated, so, um, but Counselor Hapworth is correct, and in order to, uh, make an amendment, I believe that it would require a second, and then it would just go to a vote, uh, relative to whether or not you'd want to increase that three percent, but, uh, that's where we're at, at this point.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, yes, it is an extremely awkward position, uh, to be in, that we're having this discussion, and it's not comfortable when we don't know what other employee, you know, city employees would be getting, um, but that being said, we, we are looking at the clerk's salary, and just a, a couple of points, I did attend the committee meetings, and a couple of points, there has been such an increase in, um, you know, her duties with early voting, uh, vote by mail, um, and then the council duties with, uh, you know, COVID going online, uh, with Zoom, and then having to make a hybrid, and from my understanding from the committee meetings, there's less staff, so, uh, then when we did look at the comparable, uh, salaries, um, it, it, we, she definitely, in my opinion, you know, wasn't in the bracket, uh, that she should be in, and as I had made the point in the committee meeting, uh, also, as far as, you know, the budget goes, you know, to consider the, um, cost of turnover, turnover is, uh, turnover of employees is very costly, you know, for, for the time, uh, that it takes up of staff, uh, the resources it uses, um, so I, I'm definitely comfortable, you know, with, uh, whether it's eight or ten percent, uh, making a, a change in, in where the bracket is, um, for, for the salary here.
Thank you. So we have, uh, a motion on the floor to amend, to amend this to a five percent COLA and a five percent increase, is there a second on that amendment? Seeing none?
One second, let's go.
Counselor McLean, seconds. So we have the, uh, motion by Counselor Dominguez to amend it to a five percent COLA increase, seconded by Counselor McLean, uh, all those in favor? All those in favor of the amendment? All those, everybody have their hand up if you're in favor of the amendment. Okay, all those opposed? Did everyone vote? Counselor Prozinski, I did not see your hand. Counselor Prozinski?
I'm just trying to, uh, digest this, and maybe I missed a little bit of it. Um, Counselor Hapworth's suggestion is, is an eight percent raise, Counselor Dominguez has raised it, raised it to ten percent, is, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, when, when this is voted on, um, is it a recommendation to HR that she gets this, or is this, are we sending this in stone, in stone, because we do set the, uh, clerk's salary?
Correct. We are sending this in for the budget.
Okay. So, uh, that being said, I, I have witnessed, um, how much work, um, our city clerk has put in, especially over these, uh, last two years, as was said by, by many people before, her duties have multiplied tremendously, and, uh, she hasn't been compensated for it, and, and, uh, I will agree with that Counselor Dominguez on the, on the five and five, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go back and revote this, on Counselor Dominguez's motion to, Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam, Madam President. It is had to be a real call, you recall, or is this only yes? That's my question for the process, no?
Does it need to be a real call? Counselor McCarthy?
Someone can make a motion for a roll call vote, and it just requires three hands.
Counsel Dominguez, are you making a motion for a roll call vote?
Yeah, I'm making a motion for a roll call, yeah.
Can I see three hands for a roll call vote, please? Okay, seeing three hands. Madam City Clerk, this is on the amendment for a five percent COLA increase plus a five percent increase in salary, seconded by Counsel McLean. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
No.
Counsel McLean?
No.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counsel Ricardi?
No.
Counsel Varela? Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Masillo? No. On the amendment to increase the COLA to five percent and the increase of pay by five percent also, we have 11 counselors voting, six voting in favor, five voting against the motion carries. So now we need to vote on the actual adoption. And again, that's an overall 10% increase for the reasons stated in the, in the amendment, in the order, and the list of broad goals for the year. Do we want a roll call vote on this? Roll call vote, please. Can I see three hands? Three hands for a roll call vote. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
No.
Counsel McLean?
No.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Proznyuski? Sorry. Counsel Ricardi?
No.
Counsel Varela?
No.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Masillo? No. On the adoption of a 10% increase, 10% increase for the city clerk's pay, we have 11 counselors voting, we have six in the affirmative, five in the negative, the matter carries. Further committee reports. Counsel Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam President. City of Salem, in city council, February 10th, 2022, Committee on Government Services co-posted with the committee of the whole, to whom was referred the matter of to meet amending section 31A of council rules related to liaisons, has considered said matter and would recommend discharge from the committee.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw 11 hands plus my own. On adoption of the recommendation, Counsel Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam President. So we discussed with, we had Vicki Caldwell, the city solicitor's office, join us, and we discussed just the process of, of how a liaison gets appointed, and which boards get, typically get a liaison, which ones don't. And I think that it really centers on the difference between three types of, I guess, organizations. The first is city boards that are appointed by city ordinance, so those are like the planning board, things of that nature, that within our city ordinance, they require a liaison, and we appoint liaisons to those. The second category is the, I guess, mayoral advisory boards typically, or advisory boards. There's, there are city boards, they're affiliated with the city, they're on our city calendar. Things like the Race Equity Task Force is a great example, but also No Place for Hate, now Salem Human Rights Coalition. These are not nonprofits, they are, they are, they serve sort of a city function, and they are folks that sometimes require a liaison, and we want to be able to continue to appoint liaisons to those. And the third is, is just private nonprofits. So those are things like the YMCA, or a church, or Salem United is an example here tonight that we're going to talk about. These are private nonprofits, groups that many of us, actually all of us probably support, want or many of these, these nonprofits in this city, and many of us volunteer our time at them. But they wouldn't, they would not get a city liaison, they wouldn't, or a city council liaison, they wouldn't receive a public benefit from a city, from the city council. And they may not want those also. So within her legal opinion, there could be conflict of interest issues where if one of those groups came and asked for CPA money, that some of us may have to recuse ourselves, and there could be accusations of conflict of interest potentially, because a member was appointed by the city council. So there are certainly lots of legal issues there, and we have not, as a council, ever appointed liaisons to, to private nonprofits. And again, not that we don't support them, many of us do, and many of us will continue to do that, but the official process of appointing a liaison. So we decided to discharge this from committee, we had a good discussion around this, I think it created a lot of clarity for a lot of people around how these appointments are made, and how they should be dealt with moving forward.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the adoption of the recommendation that the matter be discharged from committee, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw 11 hands plus my own, the matter carries. Further committee reports, Counsel Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam President. City of Salem, in city council, February 10th, 2022, Committee on Government Services co-posted with the committee of the whole, to whom was referred the matter of Salem United to have a city council liaison assigned, has considered said matter, and would recommend not appointing a city council liaison.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record show that I saw 11 hands plus my own. On adoption of the recommendation, Counsel Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam President. So this is, this is that, that portion of the conversation where this falls into a private nonprofit, and though they do, they do great work, and we appreciate everything Doreen does for the city and for, and for the African-American community, we, it would not be appropriate for the city council to appoint a liaison to Salem United. So we, we made the decision not to, or sort of the recommendation based on the city solicitor's advice not to appoint a liaison to Salem United.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On adoption of the recommendation to not appoint a liaison to Salem United, all those in favor?
I think, Counselor, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Counselor McLean had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Sorry. Go ahead, Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, we had this conversation a couple of times, and I just think it's worth saying that part of the conversation relative to appointing a liaison, with Salem United specifically, revolved around whether a previous iteration of the council, or some configuration of council and city government had previously agreed to assign a liaison. We couldn't, we weren't able to come to any conclusive proof of that, essentially, because no documentation was presented supporting that claim. But I do think that, I do think that there is, there is more to be known about it, and one of the things that's hard for me about this conversation is, during the course of our discussions, I don't think we particularly clarified what the role of the liaison is to these particular bodies, whether you're just there to kind of listen and look back or what have you. So I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit troubled by, by this one, because I feel like we didn't, we didn't really get to the root of what was going on in the conversation.
Counsel Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I feel the same, and I happen to participate on the last meeting tonight that we had, and until, I don't see further investigation on, on, on what is going on, based on specifically in this institution, I don't feel comfortable voting to assert any recommendation whatsoever, because I think Mrs. Wade specifically stated on the meeting that she had the impression that our city solicitor and the department, leader of the department, in the past, and the whole city council, gave the organization the okay to have a liaison. So we need to, we need to come with some type of clarification on that before we move forward into any decision we make. If the vote is happened tonight, in any way or another, I had to attend myself, because I don't feel comfortable voting for something that I know in clear firm fact that the way we are moving is the right way. And I, as she stated also in her comments, I think that she's looking for legal advice on her end. So why not to have this matter into committee work again, and get more deeply into the answer before we move forward? That's my recommendation. If we had to vote tonight, I had to, like I said, I had to vote present. Thank you.
Counsel Cohen?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, Ms. Wade stated on Tuesday that there was a decision by the council, which has not been documented. I was at some of those meetings, I've been very supportive of her and her organization, invited them to No Place for Hate, have staffed the Black Picnic table six or seven years, and this is not a reflection of her, her nonprofit, or any other nonprofit or outside organization in Salem. What was really clear from Vicki Caldwell's, you know, review with us, is that it's problematic for city council to be liaison outside of the city boards and committees. And, you know, my view from the beginning was, if it's improper for us to have liaisons to any organization outside the city, then Salem United would be included in that. And unfortunately, it's become a matter of looking at one organization. As Counsel Hapworth said, I think everyone on this, in this meeting is affiliated with multiple nonprofits in one way or the other. And if they come in front of the council, you know, I'm on the board of Project Out, which is a Salem nonprofit, and if it comes before the council, someone can advocate for them on the council. So this doesn't preclude us from doing positive work affiliated with any organization that we believe does good work. And, you know, it's my belief that we should act according to what the solicitor's office told us, is that our role is not to be liaisons to outside groups. We can be involved as private citizens, and we can, you know, represent them in votes if they're in front of the council, but to have a liaison assigned to them, I think is inappropriate.
Counsel Merkel?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Yes, I also attended the meetings, I understand that the reasons that were given why there can't be council liaisons to nonprofits, it was very clear. But it is uncomfortable that Ms. Wade clearly remembered a meeting with, with the council and with other city officials that said she would be getting a liaison, and I just, I, not enough of a veteran counselor to know if, if this can be, you know, researched, and we can get some answers on, on what she is referring to. And one of the committees, a counselor said that they recall this. I just didn't know if there was any way to, to just do a little bit more due diligence for the concern she had that there was a previous meeting that this was discussed, and she had said that it was approved that she would be getting one. Just, just to have some more answers, you know, to give her about what had gone on. But I, I don't know what the process, process would be to, to get that information when we don't know when the meeting was. But it would be nice to have some more clarity on what had gone on before.
Any further discussion? Counsel Watson felt?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I agree that it would be nice and is important to kind of track down maybe what historically happened, so that we could continue to work with Ms. Wade to, to build, to rebuild whatever bridge that may need to be rebuilt there from a relationship management perspective. But I'm, I am, you know, and I said this on the subcommittee call tonight as well, I'm going off, as Counselor Cohen said, the legal advice of the, that we received now, and today, in the present moment about this issue. And, and I think that this question of private entities getting public benefit, you know, conflict of interest if there were ever funding requests, all of that is, is a perfectly good reason to, to, to not have a liaison put in position, especially if I'm, you know, as a, as a representative of other nonprofits in town, I can tell you, you know, what's going to stop every nonprofit from walking through the front door and asking for the same kind of public benefit, right? And that's the key point of this conversation. So going off of that legal advice, I am comfortable moving forward as recommended from the subcommittee. And I, but I do agree that, you know, there's definitely some homework to be done, but I think that the matter in front of us is, really ought to be informed by the legal advice we just got in this present moment.
Counsel Proznyuski?
Madam President, I agree with Counsel Watson, Watson felt on her summation. We did get a legal, legal opinion on this, and it seems pretty black and white that the liaisons have to stay within city government. However, that doesn't answer the question of what are other groups to do when they want to have a conduit, or a conversation, or a pipeline to city hall? It's like we're not, we're shutting them down without providing them with an answer as to an alternative. And I think maybe there's some, should be some discussion with the mayor's office on, okay, this is what the city solicitor has told us that it should be, however, there should be some kind of an alternative. And maybe we could, we could ask Ms. Wade the reason that she wants a liaison specifically for, for her organization, and maybe that could apply to other organizations, and maybe we can move forward to some kind of a, a road that would connect this, this city better with these organizations. So like I say, I, I agree with what, with the committee recommended, however, I don't think this should be the end of the discussion.
Any further discussion? Counsel Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I have to acknowledge the fact that we, if we in the past made any mistake, and give, if Mrs. Wade is right, and we gave the impression that the city will allow her organization to be a liaison, I think that's a mistake that we had to pay a price for. I don't think that any other organization has to pay for. So we had to at least, and I had to agree with, with the comments before, we had to at least allow the process to find a, a, a ground fact, if this is, if it is, it was a mistake, we need to make sure that we understand that we, we had to clarify that, especially to the organization. The fact that we are in a black history month, if by any chance we do know, open up the process to make sure that we really wanted to come to the bottom of this, we were sending the wrong message. We just hear the good Counsel McLean read a proclamation, and we, at the end of the day, we are not practice what we need to be practicing on these actions, we're sending the wrong message. We need to be transparent, we need to make sure that we allow the process to move in the right direction, even though it costs a little bit more time, we need to make sure that we clarify this, this, this is a, a matter of not only the action that we had to take, it's a matter of the message that we send as the city government. If we don't send the message, we say how much we really appreciate the African-American community, and we are not, allow the process to be clear on one organization that by history is the most active one in regard to the African-American community, we, we are in the wrong, we're in the right, in the wrong path. So my position is that let's, let's start the process, let's find out what really happened. If, if it is that we make a mistake, that we let's find out what really happened. If it is that we make a mistake, that we gave Mrs. Wade the impression that that's going to happen, and now the process is that legally we cannot do it, let's have the conversation, let's make sure that we come in a common agreement with the organization and the public know exactly what's going on. So my final word, and I'm going to adjourn, I know it takes a long, is that we open the process again and find out and just allow process to come. Thank you.
Before I recognize Counsel McCarthy, I will remind my fellow counselors that they can make a motion to refer this back to committee. Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam President. I will make that motion. I move this matter back to committee. And then secondly, I'll say it's very simple. I don't, it doesn't matter what conversation was had in any other discussion that Ms. Wade may have had with anybody else in the city with regard to anything. It's simple. When we add liaisons to the list for the city council, the city council takes a vote. And the simple question is, did the city council ever take a vote to add a liaison to Salem United? Period and a sentence. She can have a conversation with XYZ person, she could have a conversation with the mayor, she could have a conversation with me. And then we could all agree that maybe it's a good idea. But until it comes to a vote, the council as a body as a whole gets to decide. And I do not personally remember ever taking a vote to make, to have a liaison for Salem United. But I don't remember everything. So it would be a very simple thing is to just, did we ever take a vote? Refer it back to committee, let the city clerk's office do a quick search. I don't believe there's any vote that was ever taken for that, and then we can refer it back. But this, I mean, there's, no one's trying to, you know, no one's trying to say anything about the, it's all about the process and how we got here. And it's not, you know, I'll just leave it at that. It's just, it's either the vote happened or it didn't happen. And I don't have a recollection that it did happen, but I have been wrong, and I admit that sometimes. And therefore, I just suggest to have the city clerk say if we ever took a vote. If she can't find the vote, even if she can't find the vote, I would then assume that it didn't happen. So, but my recommendation, move the matter back to committee.
Have a second on that.
Second.
Counselor Varela seconds the motion. All those in favor of referring this back to Counselor Watsonfeld? Wait, are we under discussion still? Okay. All those in favor of referring this back to the Committee on Government Services. All those opposed. Seeing 11 hands, including my own, the matter goes back to Government Services. Further committee reports. Counselor Hapworth.
Thank you, Madam President. City of Salem and City Council, February 10th, 2022, Committee on Government Services co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of a request from Salem Human Rights Coalition, formerly No Place For Hate Committee, to have a city council liaison assigned, has considered said recommendation and would recommend appointing a liaison from the city council.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor. All those opposed. Let the record show that I saw 11 hands. On adoption of the recommendation, Counselor Hapworth.
Thank you, Madam President. So same situation where we discussed No Place For Hate, now Salem Human Rights Coalition's status as an advisory board to the mayor, has historically had a city councilor appointed to them, and we would recommend continuing that process moving forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Hapworth's recommendation of the appointment of a liaison to the Salem Human Rights Coalition, all those in favor. All those opposed. Let the record show that I saw 11 hands, including my own. The matter carries. And just a note, if any of you are interested in being that liaison, please send me an email ASAP. Communications from city officials. Wait, nope, we're going on to page 23. Petitions.
We have a long list of public guides, taxi cab, limos, and taxi operators.
Counsel Recardi.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that these be granted.
Counsel Recardi moves that these be granted. Under discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Recardi's motion that these be granted, all those in favor. All those opposed. Let the record show that I saw 11 hands in favor. The motion carries. Further petitions.
We have a second-hand valuable license application.
Counsel Recardi.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counsel Recardi moves that these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor. All those opposed. Let the record show that I saw 11 hands in favor, including my own. The motion carries. Further petitions.
We have one contract-operated drainlay license.
Counsel Recardi.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that this be granted.
Counsel Recardi moves that this be granted. Under discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing no further discussion. On Counsel Recardi's motion that these be granted, all those in favor. All those opposed. Let the record show that I saw 11 hands in favor, including my own. The motion carries. Further petitions.
We have a listed claims.
Counsel Recardi.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
On Counsel Recardi's motion that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, all those in favor. All those opposed. Let the record show that I saw 11 hands in favor, including my own. The motion carries. Unfinished business. Counsel Recardi.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for adoption for second passage by roll call vote.
Counsel Recardi moves for adoption for second and final passage by roll call vote. Under discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the second passage of the ordinance amending mooring permit fees.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the rule.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counsel Recardi?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counsel Masillo.
Yes. On Counsel Recardi's motion for adoption for second and final passage of the new mooring permit fees, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion carries. Further unfinished business.
We have a second reading of an order to amend the rules and orders of the city council.
Counsel Recardi.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that this be adopted by roll call vote.
Counsel Recardi moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. As noted, this is the second reading of an order to amend the rules and orders of the city council. It was held under the rules of the last meeting, so there wasn't a huge discussion. But this is to remove the Committee of the Whole language that's currently within our rules of the council and adding Committee of the Whole as a, I think it's number six right in front of me, as the sixth committee on the list of committees for the council. And the Committee of the Whole shall consist of all members of the council and be chaired by the president or their designee, and shall meet separately when required to address matters before it. I believe at the last meeting, the good ward, one counselor provided some good examples and situations where that would be utilized.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the rule.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counsel Recardi?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counsel Masillo.
Yes. On Counsel Recardi's motion for adoption of the new Committee of the Whole as a subcommittee of the city council, 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion carries. Further unfinished business.
We have a second passage of an ordinance amending traffic residence sticker at Cleveland Street.
Counsel Proznyuski.
Thank you, Madam President. In the year 2022, an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 75, parking prohibitions, towing zone residence sticker, be it ordained that the city council of the city of Salem is follows. Section 1, Section 75, parking prohibitions, towing zone residence sticker of Article V-A be amended by adding the following: Cleveland Street, Zone D, color yellow, north side only, beginning 40 feet from the intersection of Jefferson Avenue, proceeding in a westerly direction for a distance of 30 feet. No visitor passes shall be issued for qualifying addresses on this street. The ordinance shall take effect as provided by the city charter. And I move that the adoption for second passage by roll call vote.
Counsel Proznyuski moves for adoption for second and final passage by roll call vote. Under discussion. Seeing none. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the rule.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counsel Recardi?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counsel Masillo.
Yes. On Counsel Proznyuski's motion for adoption for second and final passage of a traffic ordinance for resident sticker parking, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion carries. Further unfinished business.
We have a second passage of an ordinance amending traffic parking prohibited at Jefferson Avenue.
Counsel Proznyuski.
Thank you, Madam President. In the year 2022, an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 41, parking prohibited on certain streets, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salem is follows. Section 51 of Article 5 shall be amended by adding the following: Jefferson Avenue, parking prohibited on certain streets, westerly side, beginning approximately 165 feet south of the intersection of Jackson Street, in a southerly direction for a distance of 80 feet. The ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. I move that this be adopted by the second passage by roll call vote. Thank you.
Counsel Proznyuski moves for adoption for second and final passage by roll call vote. Under discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counsel Recardi?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counsel Masillo.
Yes. On Counsel Proznyuski's motion for adoption for second and final passage by roll call vote of a traffic amendment, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion carries. Further unfinished business.
We have a second passage of an ordinance amending traffic parking prohibited at Levitt Street.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a second passage of an ordinance to do the great work on Levitt Street that we covered two weeks ago. And I move that we adopt by second passage by roll call vote.
Counsel Cohen moves for adoption for second and final passage by roll call vote. Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the rule.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counsel Recardi?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counsel Masillo.
Yes. On the motion for adoption for second and final passage of a traffic ordinance, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion carries. Further unfinished business.
We have a second passage of an ordinance amending traffic stop sign at Cedar Crest Road.
Counsel Varela.
Thank you, Madam President. In the year 2022, an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 49, obedience to isolated stop signs be ordained by the city council as follows. Section 140, Chapter 42, Section 49, obedience to isolated stop signs shall be amended by adding the following: Cedar Crest Road stop sign southeastbound traffic on Cedar Crest Road at Cedar Crest Avenue. This ordinance shall take effect by city charter. Move for adoption by second passage by roll call vote.
Counsel Varela moves for adoption for second and final passage by roll call vote. Under discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, can you please call the rule?
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counsel Recardi?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counsel Masillo.
Yes. On the motion for adoption for second and final passage of a traffic ordinance for a stop sign on Cedar Crest Road, 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion carries. Further unfinished business.
We have a second passage of an ordinance amending traffic handicap parking on Cake Street.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for adoption for second and final passage by roll call vote.
Counsel McCarthy moves for adoption for second and final passage by roll call vote. Under discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the rule.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counsel Recardi?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counsel Masillo.
Yes. On the motion for adoption for second and final passage of a traffic ordinance for a handicap parking spot, 11 counselors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion carries. Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for a point of personal privilege.
Counsel McCarthy asks for a point of personal privilege. Seeing no objection.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make at this time move that we have a moment of silence for Counsel Dominguez's father. As we all know, the Counsel Dominguez suffered the loss of his father. And anyone who suffered the loss of a parent knows how hard and difficult that is. And I've never had the pleasure of meeting the man, but I understand, and I know that Counsel Dominguez is a big family man, and I imagine the loss was tremendous for him and his family. So I would like to, at this time, recognize his loss and to take a moment of silence to appreciate everything that he and his family have gone through in the last week or so.
Thank you.
Maybe at some time Counsel Dominguez and I get together and we can exchange stories about our fathers. I'm sure we have a lot of things to talk about, and I'm sure there's a lot of stories there. So I can see how touched he is by that and how that's, the whole thing is still very much affecting him. So with that, if no one else has anything, I move for that we adjourn.
Thank you. Counsel McCarthy moves for adjournment. All those in favor. All those opposed. Seeing 11 hands plus my own. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work the past two weeks. I really appreciate it.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.